Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This virtual public hearing is now called to order. Today's date is April 5th, 2021, and the time now is exactly 2 o'clock in the afternoon. The Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Response, Military Veterans Affairs, Marriage Council of Guam, and Public Transit is conducting a public hearing today on Bill Number 7336-COR. For the record, and in conformance with Section 8107 of Chapter 8, Title V, GCA, the first public hearing notice was sent out on Monday, March 29, 2021, to adhere to the five working days requirement, and the second public hearing, adhering to the 48, uh, notice, 48 hours notice, was sent out on Friday, April 2nd, 2021. And in addition to these notices, we also sent it out to, uh, the social media outlets and posted on the Guam Legislature website. And we will begin with Bill, uh, Number 7336-COR authored by Anthony Ada, co-sponsored by Frank Bloch, Juna, Christopher M. Brenius, James C. Morton. And this is an act to amend Section 60102 and 60103 of Chapter 10, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, where annotated relative to removing the restriction on ownership of suppressors and silencers from Guam law by enacting the Hearing Protection Protection Act of 2021. So before we even start, let me, uh, let me just announce, uh, and recognize some of the people that have signed up, uh, for this hearing, uh, first is Martin Howard, and I think, Mr. Howard, you're gonna be the first one to testify because I know you have a prior engagement. So we're, we're gonna go with you first, but then, uh, we go to Lee Weber, Kenneth Gibson, Darren Alvarez, Darren Alvarez, Rumbel Agonia, Knox Williams, Hardy Uvey, Joseph Salas, Deborah, Deborah Rages. And I would also like to recognize some of our, uh, members of the 36th House Legislature, Tony Ada, who is the, uh, the author for this bill, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Jim Moylan, and Senator, Senator Teletecton. So, uh, we'll start with, uh, uh, Martin Howard. Uh, Martin, you can go ahead and, and do your presentation on your testimony.
Mister Chairman.
Thank you very much, sir. Are you able to hear me?
Mister Chairman. Prior to Mr. Martin beginning his testimony, can I go ahead and give my opening remarks, sir, on the statement?
Okay, okay, Tony, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
I was gonna ask you to do that, uh, you know, once we do the introduction and, okay, that's okay. Go ahead, Senator.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, Buenos Aires, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for being here on this, uh, Zoom, uh, public hearing for Bill 73-36. Uh, Mister Chairman, thank you so very much, sir, for having this public hearing. I want to begin my remarks by stating that there are, in reality, no such things as silencers, as they are no devices that can make a firearm silent. Those movies that portray assassins using silencers, they completely muffle the sound of the gunshots are complete fiction. As, as the legislative intent of this bill accurately describes, these devices are for hearing protection while training or hunting, and the use of external protection is always recommended. Training is an important component of firearm safety for any gun owner or prospective gun owner. I fully support the Second Amendment, and I believe that law-abiding firearm owners understand the importance of training to be proficient with their firearms. Depending on the caliber of the ammunition, a firearm produces between 140 to 180 decibels of sound when fired. When a suppressor is added to the firearm, supersonic rounds average 130 decibels, which is about the same as a military aircraft on takeoff. Any subsonic round produces an average of 110 decibels, which is the volume of a rock concert. Since prolonged exposures of 70 decibels are higher, and single exposures to 120 decibels causes hearing loss, even when a suppressor is used to lower the sound level, the shooter, it is recommended the shooter still wear external hearing protection, such as earplugs or earmuffs, when using these devices. You know, Mr. Jimmy May, in one of his, uh, comments, mentioned that 30 decibels is the difference between ringing ears and ruptured eardrums. It's the difference between being able to have a loud conversation with your spouse and not being able to talk to your spouse for months without shouting. No one will ever be able to use a suppressor to hide the sound of any firearm. Additionally, these devices cost upwards of $800. That is more than the price of most firearms. There is also a $200 tax stamp that is paid to the federal government, along with an extensive background check that could take anywhere from eight to 12 months. As these devices are legal in over 40 states, the largest consumer group for any, for these devices are firing ranges and law enforcement training facilities. Firing ranges usually loan them or rent them to patrons while in their facilities, and there is a smaller market for these devices among hunters. I ask everyone to consider the science rather than the inaccurate portrayal of these devices by Hollywood. People are entitled to their opinions on the possession of firearms and the Second Amendment. They are not, however, entitled to their own facts. It is a complete fabrication of facts for anyone to assert that these devices make any firearm more lethal. The truth is that these devices make firearms safer. Mister Chairman, that is my opening statement. I look forward to hearing the testaments and, uh, uh, statements from those who are here to testify on Bill 7336.
Thank you very much, Senator Anna. I, I also want to recognize our Speaker of the 36th House Legislature, Theresa Lai, and also, uh, Chris Denny just walked in. Chris, how are you? Can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Very, very, very good, Lai, Senator. I, I wanted to make sure my hair was all in the right place, so I'm welcome, I'm glad to be here.
Uh, my picture is kind of blurry, so I can, I can see a little bit of here. And we're gonna start with, uh, we're gonna start with some of the testimonies. Uh, we're gonna start with, uh, Martin Howard, he's, he asked that, uh, he go first because he does have another engagement that he, he has to go to, so, so, uh, Martin, go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Senator. Can you hear me, sir? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, uh, for, uh, letting me speak first. I just have a engagement with my kids that I attend to. Uh, I sent a letter to, uh, the Senator's office, but I'll, I'll guess I'll just read that. Uh, it's gonna sound very similar to Senator Ada's, uh, statement. Uh, we seem to have the same opinion on this, but at any rate, I'm a 16-year Guam resident, I'm a retired US Marine, uh, I'm a former deputy sheriff and a former federal law enforcement officer. Uh, I've been around firearms since I was about seven, so that's almost 50 years now. Uh, I'm also an NRA instructor and I'm a strong advocate for responsible gun use and training. Uh, I suffer from, uh, moderate hearing loss, and more significantly, to my life, uh, moderate to severe tinnitus, uh, for which there's no cure. Tinnitus is actually the most common disability reported by the Veterans Administration, Administration, and it's aggravated by noise. Um, between the US government and, and, you know, private companies, they've spent billions of dollars, uh, invested to find a viable treatment for this condition. Uh, and I know at least the Marine Corps, but the US military in general is moving more towards suppressors for all troops for the same reason that we're discussing this here, which is hearing protection. Uh, suppressors and, uh, Senator Ada mentioned, there's no such thing as a silencer. Uh, they just reduce the noise of gunfire at a more safe hearing level. That's all they do. Uh, Guam has some of the most restrictive firearm laws in the United States. Few jurisdictions require firearms IDs, and even fewer require gun registration. Given our already strict gun laws here, I don't understand why should we, we should be prohibited from owning legally purchased suppressors like residents of 42 out of 50 United States. We should have the rights, we should have the same rights. As responsible, as a responsible gun owner who has complied with the laws covering ownership of firearms, why shouldn't I be able to own a suppressor to protect my hearing, or even just because I want one? Uh, I'd also like to point out to those who are concerned about legalization of suppressors would result in some kind of a crime wave. It's just not the case. While it's true that television often portrays criminals using suppressors, it's actually extremely rare. In all my years of law enforcement, I saw exactly two suppressors on firearms used by criminals. Suppressors are quite expensive, they're not that easy to get, and they make a firearm much less concealable. What's crystal clear is that laws prohibiting, uh, possession of suppressors are only gonna affect law-abiding citizens, which is true for just about every law related to firearms. Criminals don't care about laws. Uh, that's pretty much it for my statement again, sir. I appreciate you, uh, giving me an opportunity to speak first, so I could, uh, get out of here in a few minutes.
Uh, thank you very much, Mister Howard. Uh, is there any, uh, Senator that wants to post a question or remarks to, uh, to Mister Howard? Go ahead, uh, Madam Speaker, Theresa Lai?
Thank you, Mister Howard. Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, just wanted to know if you're gonna leave early, if I could get, uh, you are an instructor here on Guam right now, and where do you do that? Is there a business, or where is that done?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I work, uh, a bit with Gina Garrido. Uh, she has her own, she's probably the most, she's probably the busiest instructor on Guam. Uh, I only, uh, teach, you know, alongside her. I just, um, I have my own business, and I just don't have a lot of time. Uh, but I do, uh, engage quite a few people, uh, about, you know, firearms laws, and, and I am a real estate broker, so, uh, I have contacts with a lot of new people that come in, and, you know, I can educate them on the firearms laws, and I'm particularly interested in, you know, laws pertaining to self-defense, uh, so.
All right, okay. Uh, what is the name of Gina Garrido's business?
I believe it's, uh, G-Shots by Guam Training. Uh, she's really easy to find online.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Is there anybody else that want, uh, wants to post, uh, a question to Mister Howard? If not, we'll just go on to the next one in line. Uh, Mister Lee Weber, go ahead, sir.
Oh, thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh, it's an honor to be here with you all today. I, my remarks are brief. Uh, I suffer from severe tinnitus and hearing losses from explosions. I too served with the Marine Corps, only I was a corpsman of Marines. Uh, served with Marine Corps reconnaissance in Vietnam, came to Guam medevac here in 1968. Uh, I think that the legalization of, uh, suppressors is probably one of the most, uh, forward-thinking things I, I've seen happening lately. Uh, it, it saves hearing, and as Mister Howard said, uh, one of the biggest problems is people have hearing loss, just like I do, uh, but they have, uh, tinnitus, and tinnitus is a real severe issue because it can keep you awake at night depending upon how bad it is. Mine was created by gunfire and explosions in Vietnam. Uh, I spent 63 days to siege a Kason, so explosions were quite common. Uh, and I think that adding, uh, suppressors to the ability for Guam shooters is a very, very good thing. It will save people's hearing, and they do have to wear hearing, uh, protection on top of it. Uh, but it, it'll just lessen the probabilities of people running into tinnitus and having hearing losses. And I can tell you, having both of them, uh, if they're away, I could get rid of the tinnitus, like, that's the one I'd get rid of first. Uh, I can always yell. But I, I, I appreciate, uh, the fact that, uh, the senators are putting this forward and stand ready to answer any questions that any of you may have for me.
Lee, is that it?
That's it, sir.
Is there any other, is there any other Senator that wants to post a question to Mister Weber? If not, we'll just go to, uh, before I do that, I, uh, I just want to recognize Senator Frank Bloch, who just walked in. Uh, Senator Bloch, thank you very much for joining us. Next in line, uh, we can go ahead and, uh, allow Kenneth Gibson to make his presentation, sir, go ahead.
Uh, good morning, sir, and, uh, thank you for having me. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Um, however, if I could, I'd defer my time to Mister Knox Williams. Um, I reached out to him when I found out that there was a public hearing on the legalization of suppressors on island. Uh, Mister Knox Williams is the President and the Executive Director of the American Suppressor Association. So I believe his testimony and his expertise in this area would be greatly appreciated by everyone here, if that's possible.
Again, is there any other Senator that wants to pose a question to Mister Gibbons? You both? Kenneth? If not, we'll just go to the next person in line. Darren Alvarez, sir, go ahead.
Uh, good afternoon, this is Darren Alvarez. Uh, I agree with Ken, well, I guess we'll get to, uh, Mister Knox here soon enough. Um, good afternoon, Senators and citizens and everyone else. Uh, my name is Darren Alvarez. Um, I'm a resident in Santa Rita. I've been living in Santa Rita for about 11 years, uh, ever since I was stationed here as an active-duty Marine. Apparently, there's a bunch of Marines that want to talk about suppressors. Uh, my family and I fell in love with Guam, and, uh, after I left the Marine Corps, decided to stay here and continue to work. I now work as a civil servant on Anderson Air Force Base. I took an afternoon of leave today, so I could talk about the Hearing Protection Act, which is the bill that we're looking at now. In regards to that, I am also an NRA pistol and rifle firearms instructor, and have been for 12 years. Uh, I've trained hundreds of citizens looking to learn and improve with a firearm. This is the second time that I've come to the legislature in my time in Guam as private citizen. That was first, the first time was in 2014, when I worked with Senator Tony Ada, thanks, sir, and Senator Duñez, along with some local gun clubs and groups to help rewrite our concealed carry license regulations. That was successfully passed by the 32nd Legislature, and I'm hoping that this bill will also be passed. Uh, this bill is ultimately about allowing firearm suppressors on Guam. Currently, it's illegal to have them here. I think most of us are aware of that, but they are allowed in 42 states. Uh, so, some basic information, a lot of people have already said the same stuff. Suppressors are not what they were in the, in the movies. They are not silencers. They do not make things into a whisper. At a minimum, they have a quite significant sound, and this simply only helps them with the hearing. As the text of the bill itself says, it only muffles, uh, the sound about 30 decibels. It doesn't sound like very much, but every little bit helps. I unfortunately suffer from pretty significant hearing loss. Uh, some of it was because I was a helicopter pilot with the United States Marine Corps, uh, and other parts are partially from me being in combat, and also an avid gun shooter. Obviously, I've been exposed to loud, intense noise. Almost all of these events, I was able to wear at least some hearing protection. But even with hearing protection, you get hearing loss. Even with that, you know, sometimes it does damage hearing loss. And unfortunately, hearing is not something that heals. Once you've lost your healing, or your hearing, it's gone. It doesn't come back. So you may not be able to see it as we're on Zoom, and currently, I'm wearing hearing aids, have these little suckers popped in the ears. Uh, they were prescribed to me after I, after I retired from the Marine Corps for my doctors, so that I can hear correctly. I've been shooting off and on for over 30 years. Uh, amazingly, COVID has actually had me shooting even more lately because we have to stay in, there's social distancing. Uh, I've been teleworking almost daily for the last year, and I've found much of my time shooting as a hobby. I've even started hunting and got my first hunting license, uh, last year from the Guam Department of Agriculture. A suppressor would significantly help me with my current and future hearing loss. It would also be appreciated by my neighbors who hear my target shooting near my neighborhood, obviously, in a safe manner. Suppressors aren't even more regulated than pistols, and they require quite the commitment to want to own one. After purchasing one from a licensed dealer, I'm gonna fill out the paperwork, which will be checked over, studied, and validated by the ATF. It will include a felony background check, exactly like what Guam requires, before granting a firearms license. Normally, it'll take anywhere from eight to 10 months to get that final approval from the ATF before you can receive the suppressor that you purchased. So with all those things in mind, I requested this body vote yes to the Hearing Protection Act and amend Guam's laws, so that I might be able to own a suppressor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mister Alvarez. Is there any other Senators that wants to, uh, post a question to Darren? Mister Alvarez? If not, we'll go to the next person in line. We're gonna go with Knox Williams, because, uh, I think he asked to, to go next because he does have a, another commitment to go to, so we're gonna go ahead and recognize Knox, Knox Williams. Go ahead, uh, Mister Williams.
Mister Chairman, thank you very much for allowing me to be a part of this. Uh, my name's Knox Williams. I'm the President and Executive Director of an organization called the American Suppressor Association. Um, this is our 10th year doing what we do, and, and all we do is focus on pro-suppressor advocacy. And so I personally worked in about two to three dozen states. Um, we helped three states legalize suppressor ownership. We've helped 18 states legalize their use while hunting. Um, so to say that we're familiar with the issue is, uh, is a fairly large understatement. Um, at the end of the day, I mean, just to kind of echo some of the sentiments from Senator Ada and everyone else, um, this really is a common sense piece of legislation that really does, and would have a meaningful impact on people's hearing. Um, suppressors are one of the only tools that can reduce the noise of a gunshot at the source. Um, and we know through scientific studies and multiple peer-reviewed, uh, pieces of, uh, of studies as well, um, that any exposure to a gunshot without proper hearing protection can and will lead to permanent and irreversible hearing damage. Um, whether that's through single-shot exposure or through, through time, um, it, it's not a question of if it will happen, but rather to what extent. Um, I have a cutaway of a suppressor to kind of show what they actually do. Um, but this is what it would look like, um, what you normally would see. Um, but on the inside, I don't know if everyone can see it. You basically have a muffler for a gun. It's the exact same science because it was invented by the same man named Tyron Percy Maxim at the turn of the 20th century, 1909 was when his patent was approved. Um, but effectively, you have, the bullet travels this way, and as it goes through, the gases that propel it get trapped by what's called baffles. Um, and these baffles have dead space, um, called expansion chambers that allow the gases to slowly cool. Um, it's the same concept as if you have a, a balloon that you've blown up very tight, and you pop it with a needle, it's gonna make a pop. It's gonna be an audible noise. If you take that same balloon with the same gases inside it and simply untie the end, you can let those gases disperse slowly, and it's not gonna make as much of an audible noise. That's the concept with, with a firearm suppressor. You're allowing those hot gases to cool in a more controlled environment before they reach the outer and colder atmosphere. And that's what really scientifically makes the noise diminished. Um, suppressors only muffle the noise that's caused from the muzzle blast. So the actual gases reaching the atmosphere as it propels it out of the end of the muzzle. They do nothing for the action of a firearm, so semi-automatic firearms, uh, in order to operate, um, they're going to have unsuppressed gases siphon off, so they're generally gonna be louder than, say, a bolt rifle, um, for, for hunting, or like a 22-bolt rifle for, for recreational target shooting, and things like that. Um, and it does nothing to diminish the noise of a firearm, uh, excuse me, of, uh, the actual trajectory, the bullet. Um, so the bullet is actually one of the loudest noise sources, and I know Senator Ada, uh, made a quick allusion to subsonic ammunition. Uh, that can reduce the noise somewhat significantly, um, but it does not by any stretch make it silent. Um, the quietest suppressor on the smallest caliber, which would be 22-long rifle, which is what we used when we were Boy Scouts for our rifery badge, um, reduces to about 110 decibels. Um, and to put that in perspective, according to the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health, that's about as loud as a jackhammer striking concrete. Um, in the context of shooting, it is much quieter, but in the overall broad context, it's still a fairly loud noise source. Um, loud enough that, as, as multiple people have stated, you should still wear traditional hearing protection, like earplugs and earmuffs, when you're using a suppressor on a firearm. Um, to that end, you know, the biggest, um, argument that we hear against suppressors is that it somehow constitutes a threat to public safety, and that's simply not the case. Um, how can something be loud enough that you should still wear earplugs and earmuffs, but quiet enough that somehow people can't hear it? It just factually doesn't line up. Um, in 2017, Ronald Turk, who was the number two in charge at ATF, and they've been, um, uh, in charge of suppressor regulations since that was transferred over from the Treasury, um, and when ATF was stood up, they took control, I believe, in 1968. Um, but, um, he put out a white paper in 2017, and one of, one of the main topics that he talked about was firing suppressors. He did a deep dive into, um, the federal regulations and ATF's own recommendations on where that should go, and he determined that they do not constitute a threat to public safety. Um, for, for, in terms of experts talking about the issue, um, that's straight from, straight from the source. Um, a couple other things that I think are worth noting. Um, in addition to the heavy federal regulations, which I think have been touched on pretty sufficiently, but I'm happy to field any questions, if any, anyone has any. Um, according to Dr. William Clark, who is the Director of the Washington University School of Medicine's Program in Audiology, um, in one of his studies, he put out a statement that said, and I quote, "The most serious threat to hearing comes from recreational hunting or target shooting." Um, "In other studies, we've pieced together that about 70 to 80% of hunters never wear hearing protection when they're in the field, which is why there's a huge correlation, uh, with recreational shooters and hunters, um, incidences of noise-induced hearing loss and tinnitus." Um, the CDC, uh, actually conducted a study in California where they were looking at how to reduce, um, noise-induced hearing loss amongst their trainers. Um, and in that study, they said, and I quote, "The only potentially effective noise control method to reduce students or instructors' noise exposure from gunfire is through the use of noise suppressors that can be attached to the end of the gun barrel." Um, the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health issued a similar study in 2014, and in that, they said, and I quote, "If feasible and legally permissible, attach noise suppressors to firearms to reduce peak sound pressure levels." Um, again, those are two very independent sources, um, that came to the same conclusion that firearm suppressors are one of the most effective ways to really dampen that noise and make it a safer experience for people, law-abiding citizens, who have gone through a massive federal background check, um, paid the $200 tax, waited the eight to 10 months, and it's a variable, it can range anywhere from, we've heard, you know, recently about six months, we hear people waiting 18 months. Um, so there's no, no rhyme or reason to it. Um, it is just, it's highly variable. Um, but that's why in 2019, a group called the National Hearing Conservation, which is a, a private group, uh, that we've been working with for a while, we've took them out and hosted some demonstrations with, with some of their members, um, to educate them on firearm suppressors. They're completely independent of firearms. All they do is work on studying and sharing data and research, uh, that the members involved with their association have come up with on noise-induced hearing loss and tinnitus. That is their sole purpose. Uh, they came out with a statement, uh, to us in a letter, and I'd be more than happy to share that with everyone, uh, where they said, and I quote, "Although firearm suppressors do not completely eliminate the risk of noise-induced hearing loss from firearms noise, the risk can be significantly reduced. Therefore, the National Hearing Conservation Association supports the use of firearm suppressors as a form of engineering noise control to reduce hazardous firearm noise exposures." Um, again, these guys have no dog in the fight, proverbially, uh, but, uh, their, their intersection is prevention of preventable hearing damage, and that's really what this bill seeks to do and what it would accomplish, um, for the people who chose to go through the process, um, and use suppressors. Um, as was stated earlier as well, noise pollution, uh, is a very big concern, especially in urban areas. I personally have not been to Guam. I would love to come out there and, and hope, uh, to have the opportunity at some point. Um, so I apologize that I don't, and I'm not super familiar with the population density, but I'd imagine, uh, if it's anything like any other islands that I've been on... if it's anything like any other islands that I've been on, the noise of gunshots travels pretty far and it's not a pleasant noise to hear if you're not out there shooting. Suppressors won't eliminate that noise, but they will certainly reduce it, certainly reduce the sound level and the distance that it will carry. It'll still be able to be heard, but again, it won't be nearly as unpleasant as unsuppressed gunfire, which is a positive side effect from the noise reduction. One final thing that I'd like to note is that when we say that suppressors can reduce between an average of about 20 to 35 decibels, so calling it 30 decibels for a nice round number. Sound pressure levels work on a logarithmic scale. They're not linear. So, you know, 10 decibels is not twice as loud as five suppressors. Rather, for every three decibels that you increase, you're actually doubling the sound pressure energy that enters your ears. And that, over time, has a different scale that will affect basically your maximum daily exposure limit. According to OSHA, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, any noise exposure over 85 decibels, you can safely expose your ears to it for eight hours without requiring traditional hearing protection. As you double that, you cut that time value in half. So once you get up to 88 decibels, that time gets cut down to four hours. At 91 decibels, it's two hours. 94, it's an hour. And up and up and up until you hit what's called kind of the line in the sand, which is set at 140 decibels. And that's the line at which any exposure above that sound level can and will lead to permanent hearing damage. Every single gun that you ever shot that uses gunpowder exceeds that sound pressure level. And when you talk about 30 decibels, again, that is a massive difference. If you follow the logarithmic scale, think about sizing on computers, you know, kilobytes to megabytes to gigabytes. It's the same sort of thing. Or the Richter scale is another example of a logarithmic scale. But 30 decibels actually translates to roughly 1,000 times the sound energy level. So to be able to cut that down by 1,000 is tremendous. Still, keep in mind that it is a very loud noise, but not transmitting that sound energy into your ears. It also transmits through your cheekbones. So earplugs and earmuffs are only as effective as they can be because you're still going to have energy resonating through your bones, which sounds crazy, but it's true. Especially when you're talking about noises as loud as gunfire. Suppressors really are one of the only things that can help make shooting a truly safe experience from a hearing perspective. I know that's a lot to digest, but again, thank you all very much for allowing me to participate and I'd be more than happy to field any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Williams? If not, let me just go back to Mr. Gibbons, because he wanted to say something that he probably missed.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question for Mr. Williams.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for taking the time out. I'm not sure what state you're in right now, but I greatly appreciate you bringing the information you have with you to us. It's probably, what, midnight there or something? So we'll try not to keep you too long. Good information that you provided, you know, I actually suffer from tinnitus as well and that's just years behind a drummer for many other reasons. I have a question with regards to the Olympic team, their call. I guess there's a particular, the shooting team, is that, do they use this type of silencers or, you know, suppressors when they're out shooting at the Olympic level?
Senator and Mr. Chairman, honestly, I don't know. Those guns that they use are so highly specialized that it's doubtful that they do. Suppressors don't alter the path of the bullet by much, but they can and people can get very finicky on that. In fact, generally, they're going to help and improve accuracy to an extent, largely because you don't have that flinch and that anticipation of the noise of the gunshot. But for Olympic shooters, that's so highly specialized, I don't honestly have an answer for that. I apologize.
No worries. You would think, because these people train, you know, many times during the week or, you know, day in and day out, and having that exposure to, you know, the sound, that loud sound, it could be very damaging for them. So I was just wondering if you had any background with regards to the Olympic team using these. To say, I think it's needed, but I appreciate again the information you have, but if there's anyone else that knows anything about the Olympic team utilizing any silencers, I appreciate it. But until then, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. I just wanted to ask that question.
Thank you very much, Senator. Let me just go back to Kenneth Gibbons, because I know that you missed something when you first give the presentation. Go ahead, Kenneth.
Thank you, Senator. I appreciate you coming back to me. I did want to defer to Knox Williams because obviously, as you've seen, he does have a vast amount of knowledge on this topic and that's why I reached out to his organization. Anything that I'm gonna say is just going to be echoing what everybody else has touched on. But I'd like to say, you know, I am a lifelong resident of Guam. I'm a federal law enforcement officer with 20 years of service and I'm obviously a strong advocate for Second Amendment rights. I'm here today, like Darren Alvarez, the second time coming before Guam's legislative body on behalf of firearms owners in Guam to express my support for Bill Number 7336, the Hearing Protection Act of 2021, you know. And again, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Chairperson, and the rest of the members of this committee for giving this bill the audience that it deserves. I'd also like to thank Senators Ada, Senator Frank Blas, Senator Chris Duennius and Senator James Moylan. I'd like to thank you for being brave enough to introduce legislation that will undoubtedly draw negative criticism, not only from the public, but from your fellow lawmakers. Far too often, our elected officials choose to toe the line when it comes to issues that are difficult to address. And because you've introduced this legislation, I truly believe that you're an asset to our community and you exemplify what community leaders should be. I've already written, or I've submitted my written testimony in support of this bill to all members of the Guam's legislative body via email as early as this morning. Again, everything that I submitted in my testimony echoes what everybody else has already said. And if you notice that everybody's saying this, it's because these are the facts. There's no way around it. That's the truth of this. It can't be spun by the media. It can't be spun by Hollywood to be true or to be what Hollywood makes it to be, okay? Suppressors, also known as silencers, do not make firearms silent. It's physically impossible, okay? And as far as their use in crime, again, echoing what Mr. Williams said, as written by Ronald Turk, the Associate Deputy Director and Chief Operating Officer at ATF, the use of suppressors in crime is so minimal that, let me go ahead and quote this. This is from the White Paper. "Consistent with this low number of prosecution referrals, silencers are very rarely used in criminal shootings. Given the lack of criminality associated with silencers, reasonable to conclude that they should not be viewed as a threat to public safety necessitating the NFA, National Firearms Act classification, and should be considered for reclassification under the Gun Control Act." Basically, what he's saying is remove it from the National Farms Act, which currently restricts it to the process that it is going through now, where you submit your fingerprints, you submit a photo, you file your Form 4, you pay your $200 tax, you wait anywhere from six to 18 months, where if they remove it from the NFA and it's regulated under the Gun Control Act, it would be as purchasing a regular firearm, which again, you still go through a criminal background check, okay? The reason they're not using crime is criminals simply aren't interested in suppressors because they do not actually silence the gunshot. They also add length and weight to their host firearm, which makes them difficult to conceal. Not only that, possessing a suppressor during a crime carries stiff federal penalties. I think, if I'm not mistaken, the federal penalty for simple possession of a suppressor without proper license is 30 years. That's more time than most crimes warrant if convicted. You know, in contrast, the use of knives, which are not regulated to the extent of suppressors are and not regulated at all in some jurisdictions, the use of knives in crimes far exceeds that of the use of suppressors in crime. According to Statista.com, there were 1,476 murders in the United States by use of knives or other cutting instruments in 2019 alone. Whereas ATF has confirmed that silencers are rarely used in crimes despite their explosive explosion and popularity, the agency has only recommended 44 silencer-related crime prosecutions over the last decade. That roughly means 0.003% of silencers used in crimes each year, okay? That's, again, almost insignificant. Unfortunately, criminals aren't going to follow any laws. No matter how much legislation you throw in front of something to regulate it, to outlaw it, they're not going to follow the law. They're criminals. Any legislation that you throw in front of this, you're only affecting law-abiding citizens. You know, unlike many farms issues, pro-suppressor reform has received a tremendous amount of bipartisan support across the country. In the past several years, three Democratic governors have signed standalone pro-suppressor bills into law. Governor Steve Bullock of Montana in 2015, Governor Peter Shumlin of Vermont in 2015, and Governor Maggie Hassan of New Hampshire in 2016. Most recently, at the federal level, HR 95, the Hearing Protection Act, was reintroduced to the 117th Congress on January 4, 2021. Also at the state level, lawmakers from several states, including Connecticut, Illinois, Maine, Massachusetts, New York, Rhode Island and Vermont, have all introduced pro-suppressor legislation. By supporting this legislation, you're doing your part to give sportsmen and women who call Guam home the option to use suppressors, ensuring that future generations will no longer have to choose between their passion in the field or ranges and their hearing. For those who live near shooting ranges and hunting lands, suppressors will make law-abiding gun owners better stewards of their neighbors by reducing the noise pollution and complaints. And that's, for these reasons, I humbly ask your support of Bill Number 7336. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kenneth. Is there any senator that wants to pose a question to Mr. Gibbons or anybody else? Okay, so I'm just gonna go down the line here. I think the next one is my good friend Ronald Laguana. Go ahead, Ronald, sir.
Have a day. Go dugu ko. What has done of a day todos? Okay. Nagada besaugan givstino talais tisa musnya datana tulaika dididi itunoda. Pues, senor, senador pido agubenti un pulalai pare ipo maluni timakomprendi. Lo hungan donkulu nagradisamentu para iman republican iman gayki. No, Tony, Senator Tony Ara, Senator Jim Boylen, Senator Chelo Tadegui, Senator Chris Duennius, Senator Frank Blas, Senator Juwan Brown, it's a good turnout. And that donkulu na Jesus masi denagradisamentu para i masgehilo geno. Speaker Theresa Lahey nagai geogeno par representai democrat den spido. Pues, hungan husso potisti na life piniponi i 73, 76. Sa gualuki prewa den si Lee, Lee, si Martin, si Darren. Baba istea natalanga matututzu. It's the only year that's working. This other one is just kado. So, you know, I am a gun enthusiast. I am, I'm just a hobbyist. The zao esti, you know, that tanayera putunida, you know, to protect, protehi nai i talanyata. And that's a problemata nistiza, you know, us popati si Martin, si Lee, si Knox, si Ken, si Darren, da parewa esenintin mami na para ta protehi sti talanyata. You know, that's a problemanya, the zao luki us popati mina dosna amendment, the second amendment. Za edza nato mata tuzo sa ifam onu luki la la yusha zan mia, you know, edzi para ma ma ki nai gi target range as a hobby expressa edza pa besaugan nyamzu donkulu na Jesus masi za husso poti esti na life piniponi. Sa putabot, senador pido u epukla iman gatongu nai gi iman democrat nai napanda. Za masu poti esti lai zatapandanya na un komunida, un patida, para minali, Jesus masi.
Jesus masi, Ronald. Let me just break that vernacular into what Ronald had mentioned in English. He's talking about the protection of your eardrum and everything else. That's basically what he was saying to us and he's supporting this bill. Thank you, Ronald. Next in line, we want to go to Hardy Vey. Tan, Tan Vey?
Yeah, hi, hi. Have a day, have a day. Thanks for the opportunity to speak, you know, senators as well. There's not much I need to say because everybody else has already pretty much said it better than I could have ever. The only thing I can, I guess I can add is that, well, what I want to say is I've actually been trying to figure out how to pitch this idea also quite some time, so I was quite happy to see, you know, come up as a bill. I know it's kind of jumping ahead, but I've always had my eyes on legalizing NFA items. You know, not one for prohibition, but for fair regulation, I don't see how it can't be done. Especially since most states in the US are already doing it, you know, we could easily follow suit. Has already been mentioned with the long approval times and tax stamps and registration fees and that. You know, the reason why I kind of focus on this one also on the side sometimes is because I think there's some, I feel there's some benefits for Guam, social and economic benefits in some way where, you know, that's extra revenue. Like, I was just doing some rough estimates over the, like, a couple, over the years, at least, like, just, let's say 10 people every day, for example, just registers this one suppressor every day. No, it's not improbable for population 160,000, right? Even if the fee was like 600 bucks for the suppressors, just throw a number out there, don't, you don't have to use it. If it was 600 bucks, 10 people, you could pull in about 180,000 a month, an extra revenue for Guam. But like, what I mean by I'm like NFA, I'm talking about like the other NFA items that are also in that classification. Most of the time, people who would be willing to invest in a suppressor would also invest in other NFA items. And I'm just gonna wager that one person would probably most likely invest in three NFA items at any given time, which you could charge for about 600 dollars apiece, for example, right? So if just one suppressor, it's already 180,000 dollars a month, extra revenue a year, it's about 2 million something. But if those same people were to actually invest three NFA items, that's 1,800. They would most likely be willing to invest, that's an extra, what is that, 540,000, I had a calculation here. Oh, 1.1 point something million a month, times about 12 a year. I think there's some value in this to take this kind of money, invest in the police forces that, you know, could definitely use this money. So, you know, I'm in the camp for, you know, fair regulation. If we were to own these, I don't mind making the investment to improve social infrastructures and whichever agency Guam sees fit. That's basically all I got to add. Thank you very much.
Next in line, Mr. Hardy, thank you very much. We're gonna go to Deborah Rages. Deborah, go ahead now. Is there anybody that wants to post a question to Mr. Hardy, Tan Vey? If not, oh, the speaker, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Tan, can you just repeat for me? Maybe I missed it, but so where does the money come from for the government of Guam? You're saying in the sales or a license?
So if we, yeah, if we, if, like, the registration fees, see, I don't quite know exactly how the money is allocated in Guam. Because I'm just throwing out some ideas there, but like, I'm just saying the, I guess, the funds collect. Because I'm just throwing out some ideas there, but like, I'm just saying the, I guess the funds collect or the fees collected from these registrations. I guess we would pay the local government because that's as far as I know that when I do purchase a firearm, I pay registration fee to the gov, to the Guam Police Department. After that, I never really did look into where the money goes, but you know, I mean, if I'm gonna purchase a suppressor, which is about 800 to almost 1,000, $2,000 at times. Then on top of that, you know, if you have the money to pay for suppressor, I think you can make the investment for, you know, a decent registration fee. So that way, it's that there's some benefit also for the government. I happen to like the way the Guam laws are for guns here, where we have licenses and registrations. You know, like, I don't mind it. And I think this, with this system, it's actually better than a lot of the U.S. gun laws, because you know, it's not just U.S. gun laws. You can't just say U.S. gun laws. Each state has their different laws. That's why you have these issues there that you're seeing, but Guam actually is fairly sensible. So, you know, if we could use the same system that's already existing, just add another item, like new fee and have extra revenue. That's just the general explanation.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Okay. Deborah, go ahead.
What is the name of the day? Thank you, Senators, for having me and giving me this opportunity to speak today. I've prepared a statement, if you don't mind, I'll just read it. Thank you for allowing, thank you for the opportunity to speak today and express my support for bill 7336, the Hearing Protection Act of 2021. My name is Deborah Rages. I am a firearms instructor certified by the United States Concealed Carry Association and the National Rifle Association, more commonly known as USCCA and NRA respectively. I am qualified to teach the introduction to firearm safety, home defense, and concealed carry weapons concepts. I am a chief range safety officer certified by the NRA and a safety officer certified by the International Defensive Pistol Association, more commonly known as IDPA. I also serve as a president of the Very Honest Practical Shooting Association, or MPSA. Starting in 1994, my husband, my husband's all too frequent work-related travel left me at home alone with the children. Because of his absence, he encouraged me to take a firearm safety class. I told him at the time that guns are not my thing and stood by this opinion for the next 20 years. I told him, I did, I did not always have an appreciation for firearms until very disturbing and horrific home invasions and carjacking started happening more and more frequently in Guam. My journey into the world of firearms started after the much-publicized 2012 kidnapping and rape of a Crown Bakery customer, the 2013 Piper Home Invasion in Nemets Hill that left the victim almost lifeless, and the home invasion and murder of Miss Mothness in Bergada Heights. All these crimes against women occurred within a 12-month timeframe. Since then, there have been numerous crimes against women. I knew then that I had to do something to give myself and my children a fighting chance. The next few years led me to a series of local and off-island firearms basics and advanced training courses in the defensive use of firearms. That paved the path for me to become an instructor, which gave me the opportunity to help other women who share my concerns. In 2016, I received my first certification as a firearms instructor and began team teaching with my husband Phil. Unlike riding a bicycle, the safe use of a firearm is a perishable skill. Frequent practice and training with dry fire or no ammunition and live fire with ammunition is required to maintain your skill sets. Although we utilize electronic hearing protection devices, we find ourselves constantly exposed to high noise levels. Prolonging exposure to the blast from a firearm, and in our case, when at a public firing range, multiple firearms can cause injury to our ears and subsequently hearing loss. Over the years, we have encountered a significant number of people, particular women, in particular women, who have expressed a desire to learn the proper and safe use of a firearm to help defend themselves and their families against possible attack. Unfortunately, apprehension and apprehension caused by the loud report or bang from the gunfire presents a major barrier and oftentimes results in these women not taking the next step in their quest, leaving them and their families vulnerable. For the few that have overcome the fear caused by the loud bang from gunfire and have purchased a firearm, the concern of ear injury and loss of hearing that may result from the defensive use of a firearm in a concrete home exists. Please understand that during a home invasion, a defender will not have the time to put on hearing protection devices on themselves or their children. Suppressors are an accessory that can be left installed on a defensive firearm that will allow the firearm's use while helping to protect against ear injury and prevent long-term hearing loss. Bill 73-36, if passed into law, will provide us with the opportunity to choose. I understand that not every firearms owner will opt to purchase a suppressor. The high-cost in-depth background check, the additional training required for the safe use of a suppressor may be prohibitive to some. Senators, I implore you to give bill 73-36 your fair consideration. Please do not let the drama of Hollywood or the agenda and incorrect information presented by the anti-gun lobby make your decision for you. Thank you for the opportunity, the opportunity to express my support for bill 73-36.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Rages. Is there any of my colleagues that wants to pose a question or remarks to Mrs. Rages? Okay, okay, Senator, tell them, go ahead, go ahead, ma'am.
It is Massey, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much, Deborah, for coming and testifying this afternoon. I greatly appreciated your story. It really says a lot. I mean, within that time period that you decided to take it upon yourself to protect yourself and the reason behind it. It's truly an issue that's been stemming on our island for a long time, and it's very important. So I just wanted to thank you for stepping up and giving us your story. I greatly appreciate it and your comments that you made. Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to inquire, is anyone else there to testify or are we able to open any questions or comments?
Senator Joanne, we have just one more.
Okay, then. Okay, we can have that and then we can open up to either questions, sir.
You know, time to ask questions and make remarks. So we're just gonna go ahead and call on to Phil Diaz? Phil Diaz?
Yes, sir, Senator.
Can you tell me your, okay, you're on now. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry for, I'm not good at IT person. I wish my kids were here to help dispense this. Sorry. I'm a retired police officer, 27 years plus my military made it 30. Four years in the United States Marine. And I just want to say this. When we go shooting in both the Marine Corps, the military, and the law enforcement, we always wear earplugs when it's time to train, to get certified on the firearm. However, not once do we have the time to use earplugs. And even as a patrol officer, we don't have time, we don't, GPD never issued me an earplug out on patrol. So for the 11 to 12 years, I was not once issued by GPD earplugs and not once have I ever carried or known any patrol officers to carry earplugs. It's a moment of, of seconds when something happens. And a gun owner in the house to defend his family does not have the time to fumble and look for earmuffs or earplugs. And when you presented this bill, Senator Peiru, I was like, wow, I'm surprised. And I agree with Ken Gibbons for all you senators to bring this up and to support it because you're gonna have probably negative people from the anti-gunners, which for me, all the people who are not from here, I wish they would just pay attention to their backyard because this is our island. This is Guam, and I wish Guam to be Guam. Like Senator Terahia, I was not in favor of her, but now I supported her because when she said we should maybe abide by the ATF rules and regulation, that made me support Senator Theresa Lai as well. And I strongly support this bill. And I hope you, all you senators can get your other colleagues to make it 100% supportive because, like I said, the gun owner in the middle of the night, someone breaking in, it's not gonna look for earplugs or earmuffs and say, wait, excuse me, let me put on my earplugs and earmuffs so I don't deafen my ears when I shoot you. There's no time. So I strongly support this bill and I thank you all for the authors behind Peiru. And I came in late because I'm watching my grandson, so. Thank you again for your time and appreciate it, and I hope this bill passes for the people of Guam. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesus Massey. Thank you very much. And now, ladies, colleagues, and ladies and gentlemen, let me just go back to the senators. Whoever wants to make any remarks or whatever, I will start out with Senator Joanne Brown. Go ahead, Senator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the comment, opportunity to comment. You know, I keep hearing about the Hollywood issue, and I don't think it's really a question of that if anyone has concerns or reservations. I mean, dealing with reality in our community, a lot of people have apprehension. And of course, you can look at this issue many different ways, but a lot of people have apprehension in relation to this issue, probably because of the amount of crime that we have in our community. And while I'm sure many of you will say, well, I don't see the direct connection between putting silencers on guns that will allow us to save our hearing, there's apprehension about that. It's like legalizing marijuana during a time when we have a major drug issue in our community. So I don't think it has much to do with Hollywood or our fascination with watching movies and the impact of that. I think it might be helpful for committee members, for those of you who are there, there is a way to actually, or a video that maybe we can reference on what the difference is in the sound of firing a weapon on its own, and then what it sounds like with a silencer attached to it. That might perhaps give us a little more information and awareness of what's involved with that. I think we're well aware that citizens in our community, that are law-abiding citizens, will properly use their guns properly. If the silencer is allowed, I'm sure law-abiding citizens will use that properly as well. But we also have a reality in this community of many individuals. Unfortunately, as we look at the paper every day, as we listen to the news, as we listen to talk radio every morning when we wake up of the amount of crime that's happening in our community. And while many can say there's no direct correlation, it's always those individuals that get a hold of guns illegally and improperly that create the problems in our community that we're dealing with. I mean, to just, you know, recently hear of the murder over the weekend of a former mayor in our community. Those are the apprehensions that are happening, and certainly it's even unfortunate, which is coming more realities, like we're living in the wild, wild west. And instead of having a civil community, we have a situation now where unfortunately, we as residents literally have to protect ourselves, our family, our property. You know, we live at home in our own jail cell. I mean, now we have to worry about fencing our house. We have to worry about having cameras in our homes. We have to worry about getting security systems installed. We have to worry, gee, you know, do we have attack dogs that are trained in order to be able to feel a sense of safety of living here? And that's a sad reality that we're dealing with in our community. So I don't look at it as a question of being, you know, that we're fascinated with watching movies and we see the connection between having a silencer and a weapon that James Bond perhaps would use as whether or not people in our community have a sense of apprehension just because of the amount of crime that's happening and that we're almost having to be, as our own citizenry here, having to protect ourselves from each other. And that's the reality. I mean, I understand the logic of what's being brought forth. I'm probably inclined to support this piece of legislation. I don't think it's a question of being brave or not being brave. I think it's wanting to ensure law-abiding citizens in our community are safe as well. And that's the unfortunate reality is that we don't have that happening now. We see crime continuing to increase. We see continued abuse out there. And, and you know, well, yes, guns and knives, maybe knives are more prevalent. However, you know, we can look at the statistics, we can put that in front of us, we can have different statistics that are provided for us to view. But I think that's the reality we need to come to terms with in looking at this or any other type of legislation that's related to gun use in this community. So I just wanted to put that out there because I, I think that if your view for some of you that provided testimony, you think that maybe some of us may not vote for it because we have an illusion to what we think silencers are and what impact that would have with that increased crime or would it make it less detectable if someone were to use this in a crime? You know, I'm all for, for, you know, people having the ability to be armed. I don't have any objection to that. You know, I'm a daughter of a veteran that served in Vietnam, who also suffered from a similar hearing problems that a number of you have relayed and what it's like to have to live with those disabilities many, many, many years after you've been in combat. So I can appreciate all that, but I just wanted to put that out for clarification because we're not living in a world of illusion. I mean, we're living here just like everyone else and we're experiencing the same challenges and harms that's coming to members of our community. And I just think we need to put that out there rather than think that there's some other world of reality that we're living in. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions. I think many of the members here that have provided testimony have certainly provided a lot of more information and enlightenment on this issue. And I certainly appreciate their time today to come forth and provide testimony. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator. I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to allow the co-sponsors of the bill to make their remarks also. Let me go with.
Mr. Chairman, could I just add one thing really quickly?
Okay, okay, go ahead, Mr. Webber.
Mr. Williams brought up something I wasn't aware of, and that was the hearing loss by a bone induction. It's, we're the representative for the Oceanic Technical Group, and we sell service underwater hearing and communication devices. And those are all bone induction, and it's basically the bones right behind your ears. I didn't realize, quite frankly, that, that that sound would get transferred in that way as well. And I, I never thought about it until he brought it up. And, and I know that if I put one bone phone on one left side, you will hear the sound in both of your ears underwater. So my, that, that logic tells me that the concussion that's from gunfire damages those small cilia in your ears. And if it does one, it probably does both through induction. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Webber. Next in line, I want to call on Senator Frank Blas Jr. to put out his remarks or whatever. Go ahead, Frank.
Well, thank you. Well, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, as a co-sponsor to the legislation and who supported it, you know, it's kind of interesting. I've been sitting here listening or really trying to listen to the conversation with tonight is with, with the ringing in my ear. And, you know, like Phil, you know, Diaz, and Senator Delaide. I can appreciate that, you know, many times as we were, as we had to, you know, go to the firing range. And yeah, they're right, you were never issued earplugs other than on the firing range. And quite frankly, sometimes you didn't even wear the earplug in the firing range. But that's it, is, you know, decades later, I still suffer from, from the effects of, of, you know, the loud noise, the, I mean, you know, the firing off of the weapons, firearms. And so I agree, I mean, and I, yes, you know, I understand the consternation of a bill such as this because you, you, the closest thing you think of silencers or suppressors on firearms is what you, what you see produced by Hollywood. And I can tell you that as a person who's actually had the fire weapon with a suppressor on it, yeah. And it's still very recognizable. It's just that it's, it's, it's not as loud, okay? And you can actually turn and talk to somebody afterwards. So I'm in support of this and being sponsored to this legislation for giving me that opportunity to be. uh, for giving me that opportunity, uh, to be able to, to co-sponsor this piece of legislation. Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, no, no questions to anyone.
Thank you, Piro. Thank you. Uh, next in line, let me go to, um, um, my favorite Senator, Christopher Duvainia. Sir, go ahead. I'm just going down the line here, uh, and then we'll go to James Boylan, Senator Boylan.
That's why I thought I was your favorite Senator.
Hey, Sisus Mossi, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I think what it comes down to, uh, from my good friend, uh, Farid Pido, Senator Pido is he just likes my hairstyle. So, uh, anyways, um, you know, uh, I'm thankful also to, to my good friend, Rata, for inviting me uh, on to be a co-sponsor of this legislation. Uh, I was hoping that, uh, you distinguished individuals, subject matter experts, were going to come forward to provide this information so that we can disseminate it to the public on exactly what the intention of this legislation is. And I was not let down. So I thank each and every one of you that are in your professional capacities, having served our country and having had to use firearms as part of their day to day operations and, and the other citizens, uh, who are gun enthusiasts and have, uh, you know, had the, the pleasure of being able to both protect themselves, uh, to hunt, uh, if that was their sport or maybe just uh, to gather, uh, you know, for their families. And so, uh, I just wanted to say, I'm so glad you came forward so we can continue, uh, to educate the public. What one other thing, uh, other than, uh, the, the fact that, uh, you know, I'm very supportive of, of individual rights. I also am an avid watcher of television. My favorite shows are, are, are crime shows and and watching the bad guys get put away. And one of the things I wanted to discuss that was here, discussed at length here is that criminals don't care about suppressors. They don't care about illegal, uh, issues. They're criminals and they also, if they really want to silence a weapon, because I've seen this on many TV shows, they will use crude devices as well. They wouldn't, they wouldn't even bother trying to get a, a, a suppressor or the like. I've seen tennis balls and other, other types of crude devices that have been placed on weapons. Uh, and that's what criminals do. Uh, so I, I don't think we're in any way enhancing criminals. They're criminals and that's what they do. So uh, thank you, Senator Rata, once again. And thank you, like, uh, Mr. Chairman for, for recognizing, uh, me today. And, and I want to listen to the rest of the conversation. Sisus Mossi.
Uh, thank you very much, Chris. Uh, next in line, uh, I want to call on, uh, another favorite Senator of mine, Senator Jim Moeller. Sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you for the information. Very informative, uh, today. And I, I, of course, you know, we have a co-sponsors on these bills, but we also, um, we, we need a magic number of eight. So in addition to your senators that you have here today, I highly encourage the the folks that give some testimony today to also contact the remainder of the senators and ask for their support on this bill. I see no reason for objection of this bill and and move it forward on, onto session floor and, and get it passed as quickly as possible. So thank you for your testimonies and please contact the other senators that we're not able to attach. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, you know, I rise in support of this bill also. So, uh, next in line, uh, I want to, uh, give our speaker the, uh, the opportunity to give us our insight. Thank you.
Thank you also, Mr. Chair, and all of those who testified today. Um, very helpful testimony. Um, and you know, I, I very much understand what you're saying about hearing loss and protection of hearing. And I can see that, uh, that the bigger issue for those who are training regularly with, um, uh, guns and that are, you know, at the training ranges where, you know, obviously there are repeated, um, shots being made. But I'm, I mean, I'm also reading other articles that talk about, uh, the use of silencers. While they might not cut the entire noise down, like some of you have said, that they do distort uh, somewhat and that, um, it makes it harder for, to determine where the shot is coming from exactly. And so I'm thinking about, you know, use of guns in the jungle, near the beaches or even in the neighborhoods, as some of you have described. And even with the, um, well, with law enforcement as it is today, not always available in every one of our communities. You know, wouldn't it be in the best interest of the community to know exactly where these gunshots were coming from and not for those, uh, the location of the gunshots to be distorted in any way? Especially, you know, because Guam is small and there are very few places you can shoot where you're going to be, you know, not close to somebody else. So that's my question. It's about the distortion of, of, you know, where these shots are coming from. And I guess, yeah, that's, that's what these other articles are talking about, that that is the concern of the law enforcement. Uh, when they are concerned, not all are, but some are.
Are you done, Speaker?
Yes, I guess I'm asking if anyone, um, disagrees with what I've read. Yeah, that says that these, uh, would, they distort, um, the sound enough to, to make it, uh, not as easy to detect where the shots are coming from.
Okay, I guess, uh,
Have their hands up.
Who wants to say something also? Go ahead, Kenneth.
Mr. Gibbons? I understand your concerns and I've read those articles as well. Uh, the ability or the the factor of distortion from a silenced gunshot, yes, that does exist. And that is most likely in the event of a single gunshot. Okay, um, and at extreme distances. I'm not sure if you're aware that a single unsuppressed gunshot in a residential community, in a urban environment goes largely unnoticed. Anytime it happens, a single unsuppressed gunshot will go largely unnoticed. Okay, so again, being that suppressors do minimize the sound to not saying a hearing safe level, but they do minimize sounds or lessen the sound by 30 decibels. Multiple gunshots from a suppressed weapon, you will hear, you will be able to determine where that gunshot is coming from. And if I'm not mistaken, there's actually technology out there that's used by law enforcement in large metropolitan cities. If, if I'm not, if I recall correctly, I think it's Shotseek or ShotFinder. In large metropolitan cities like Chicago, New York, Detroit, they employ this technology. It's actually microphones that are placed on the rooftops of buildings. And even in a large metropolitan city with all the background noise, this technology can pick up and determine the direction of a suppressed gunshot. So your concerns of a suppressed gunshot, you know, distorting the noise and not being able to find the location, I think that's largely unfounded.
Well, I'm not sure we have that technology right now. So this bill intends to go into place immediately if passed. And so yes, that is a concern. And I know I have not noticed that a single gunshot in a neighborhood would go unnoticed. I don't, I, I think that, that, uh, up to debate. That doesn't sound accurate to me, especially where I live. I think I hear gunshots and I can hear one or multiple. Ms. Rages, you had your hand up? Did you want to answer?
Oh, I, I'll, I'll, I, I can speak after, uh, Mr. Williams. He had his hand up.
Okay, Mr. Williams.
Speaker, thank you very much for allowing me to, uh, to help address your question. Um, several things, um, and I think that that is a, uh, an important question and, and uh, to give the full answer, I think that the most effective way is to actually go out to a shooting range and hear firearm suppressors on a host firearm. I apologize that I can't be there to do that with you right now, um, because I think it really is one of those situations where hearing it truly is believing it. Um, where it translates directly and, uh, you really gain the firsthand knowledge and that tacit experience, um, to be able to understand that they don't distort it the way that um, the media, uh, will lead you to believe. Um, I'll give you an analogy. So every year-
I'm talking about, you know,
The articles that you-
Articles. Yes. And so that's all I want to know is that, you know, is that, uh, is there some truth to that? Or are you saying there's absolutely no truth that the sound is being distorted enough that it makes it harder to detect where these gunshots are coming from?
It reduces the noise, certainly. Um, so in that capacity, yeah, any noise reduction is going to make it like mildly less easy to identify. But that, by that same token, um, identifying gunshots is not something that you're just, you know, naturally born with. There are a lot of noises that sound similar to that. I myself live in Atlanta, Georgia. Um, and a couple of years ago, uh, there was a shooting about three quarters of a mile away from my house. Um, I was watching TV at about 10 o'clock at night with my then girlfriend who I was living with. Um, we heard about 10 to 15 shots in very quick succession. She thought they were fireworks. I immediately knew they were gunshots. Um, and that was just because I've been exposed to a lot of gunshots and she hadn't. Um, so in that regard, gunshots often in urban areas especially do blend in with car backfires with um, any sort of loud concussive noise. People often do think that they're fireworks, um, and get them confused. Um, and to, to Mr. Gibbons' point, you know, with a single shot, uh, perhaps, but, um, after, with multiple gunshots, you're absolutely going to be able to identify them. We host a hunt, uh, here at a property in Georgia every year where we have about 20 or so people come out and we do a hog hunt. And it's on a property that's about 8,000 acres, roughly three quarters the size of Manhattan. I apologize for my ignorance. I'm not sure how that translates to Guam, but it's a very large piece of property, at least by east coast standards out here. Um, we spread everyone out throughout the property. Um, the furthest folks are about an hour away from the lodge, just given the way that we have to drive on the internal roads on the property. And every single gunshot is heard by everyone on the property, even though you're using suppressed firearms. So to the extent that, you know, perhaps in a jungle, you might not be able to hear and discern the noise of a suppressed firearm. I can say with firsthand knowledge, that would be inaccurate. In an urban environment where it does get clouded and masked by other loud noises, um, it's just not going to carry nearly as far. And that's just by virtue of the fact that there are other noises competing with that. Um, so it's going to kind of blend in quicker than it would in a quieter environment, if that makes sense. Um, another thing to, to Mr. Gibbons' point, and you did address it, y'all do not have ShotSpotter. That's the name of the microphone array technology. Um, but based on, uh, their company statements, um, their microphone arrays can identify suppressed gunfire. Um, so scientifically, it doesn't mask it enough for technology to not be able to identify and pick up the direction and geolocate um, the noise based on it. Um, it's whether or not you have a trained ear and, and I would counter that. Um, the difference between someone who can identify suppressed gunfire, uh, versus unsuppressed gunfire, if you can identify one, you'll be able to identify the other.
All right. Well, maybe you misunderstand my concern. My concern is that if, you know, we all live here on Guam, uh, there are jungles near almost every one of us in our villages and our workplaces. Uh, they're all around. And I want to know where the gunshots are coming from. I want to be able to tell law enforcement. We all should be able to help them and point out which direction it was coming from. I want that to be easily discernible, uh, when we need it to be and not, not, uh, even more difficult to, to track these things and make sure that, uh, we can enforce our gun laws. We, that's really it. And, um, so, yeah, I, I am, I'm surprised about, um, well, anyways, okay, Ms. Rages, did you want something to add or? I thought your hand was up earlier. That's why I called you. Otherwise-
May I add one, one thing to that?
Sure.
Um, because I believe, I believe I understand your question better now. Um, I think that that, that did provide a bit of clarity for me. Um, so during my original testimony, I alluded to the fact that a suppressor only muffles the actual muzzle blast of the firearm. So, right? The gases that are actually project, they're pushing the projectile out of the barrel when they hit the open atmosphere. That's the only noise source that suppressors actually contain and reduce. Um, the noise of the actual bullet in air is roughly three decibels quieter than the noise of the muzzle blast. Um, that does make it about half as loud as the actual muzzle blast, but it's still incredibly loud. If you're talking about something uh, in the neighborhood of 160 to 170 decibels of that actual bullet, um, as it travels through the air, that is absolutely identifiable. Um, and the suppressor does nothing to reduce that. In fact, if anything, it actually might increase it because the gases propelling it are in, in a controlled environment for just a little bit longer. Um, and that generally increases the muzzle velocity, um, which does have minor impacts on the noise of the actual bullet as it, as it travels through the atmosphere. Um, so in that regard, um, yes, gunshots are still identifiable because one of the main noise sources is the actual sound of the bullet traveling through the air.
Okay. So you're saying that these articles that say that it makes it difficult to detect the, the direction of the gun are more difficult to direct, the detection of the gunshot, those articles are all inaccurate?
Yes, ma'am. I would contend that most of those people haven't actually been around many suppressed firearms.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so before I go back to the, uh, author of the bill, is there anybody else that wants to, uh? Okay, Senator, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. Mr. Notts, earlier you provided some data, um, uh, regarding how many the percentage of these suppressors that are used in crime. What, what was the, that data you provided earlier? And is that considered most areas?
Yes, ma'am. So, yes, ma'am. Um, so I believe, uh, Kenneth Gibbons alluded to Ronald Turk's White Paper. I also made an allusion to that very briefly. Um, but in that, he studied, uh, the use of suppressors by criminals throughout nationwide. Um, and it was in reference to, uh, a bill that we helped draft, uh, along with the ATF. It's called the Hearing Protection Act. Um, it's trying to remove, um, suppressors from the purview of the National Firearms Act, transfer them to the Gun Control Act and treat them effectively like uh, regular Title I firearms. So like rifles or shotguns where you, anyone over 18 can purchase one after passing what's called a NICS check and filling out a Form 4473. So going through the same background check process. That was what it was in reference to. Um, and during that, um, I don't, I don't have his direct pull pulled up. Um, I believe Kenneth Gibbons does, but it was effectively that these are so rarely used in crime, registered suppressors are so rarely used in crime that it's, it's basically statistically insignificant. Um, the, you're talking about individual instances out of, at this point, um, nearly 2.2 million suppressors in circulation in the 42 states where they're legal to own. Uh, where you can count on one hand the number of times that legally registered suppressors are being used in crime. Um, oftentimes it's people who are going and purchasing, um, what are called solvent traps. Um, or purchasing, um, you know, devices that they can easily turn into a suppressor, uh, from China, uh, through wish.com. Um, and similar things like that, but it's, it's largely unregistered suppressors. At the end of the day, the technology of a suppressor, it's not rocket science and it's fairly easy to make a rudimentary suppressor on your own. Um, this legislation will do nothing to prevent criminals. Um, if they're going to break the law, they're going to break the law. All this legislation is seeking to do is to allow law abiding citizens who are going through the process um, in order to legally obtain one, giving them the option to do that. Again, it's not something that they have to do, but something that they would be able to do, which is why we very much support it.
Thank you, Mr. Notts. Um, Mr. Gibbons, do you have those data? Because the stuff that I'm trying to get, they're saying that 1% of, of these suppressors are used or any kind of crime, uh, happening. And it's, it's almost so, so minimal that it's very hard to even, uh, provide data, uh, with regards to this. And that's why I was just wondering, I thought I heard someone give some data. So, did you have any?
Well, that, that data again is off that white paper from Ronald Turk, the Associate Deputy Director, Chief Operating Officer of the ATF. Um, and that white, that white paper is actually titled Options to Reduce or Modify Firearms Regulations. Um, you can actually pull up the complete white paper. I don't have the complete white paper in front of me. Um, I was using sections of it, uh, for my testimony. But, uh, pull the actual white paper, Google it. Uh, I believe it leads you to the Washington Post where they do have it. And again, in that paper, Turk goes on to say, consistent with the low number of prosecution referrals, silencers are very rarely used in criminal shootings. Okay, um, within that paper, so I pulled the data as far as crimes that involve knives off Statista.com. The data that I pulled for silencer prosecutions was directly off the ATF website. If I'm not mistaken, under the ATF website, under resources- under the ATF website, under resources, they have all their reports as far as crimes, um, registrations, as far as registration numbers, it's all on that website, as well as the FBI's Uniform Code of um, Criminal Statistics.
I appreciate that because the research I'm doing, it's it's very hard to find any kind of data because it's hardly used in crimes. So it makes it very difficult. But there was um, a a video that was sent to a Senate, the senators. I think, I know I received it on YouTube, kind of giving an example of the sound, uh, the difference of different uh, guns. Um, I don't know, Mr. Chair, if your office is the one that provided us that video, but it it would show the sound of um, what it sounds like on different guns with a suppressor and one without. And, you know, I it was very hard to tell the difference. You know, you can still really hear that sound uh, coming from. But uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. That was a, just wanted to hear some data information. Appreciate it.
I think Mr. Williams uh, wants to share some some of his thoughts. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, so Senator, to answer your question, I've got the paper pulled up. Um, and I'm going to read a direct quote from it, where he addresses the statistics around uh, suppressors that led to to his conclusion in his white paper. Um, and again, this is Ronald Turk, who at the time was the number two in charge at ATF. Um, he wrote, quote, "On average in the past ten years, ATF has only recommended forty-four defendants a year for prosecution on silencer-related violations. Of those, only approximately six of the defendants had prior felony convictions. Moreover, consistent with this low number of prosecution referrals, silencers are very rarely used in criminal shootings. Given the lack of criminality associated with silencers, it is reasonable to conclude that they should not be viewed as a threat to public safety necessitating NFA classification and should be considered for reclassification under the Gun Control Act." Um, so that was his direct quote. Um, and he has access, had access to every uh, all of the historical data uh, anytime that a suppressor has ever been used in crime, and that was the conclusion that he came up with. Um, the, keep in mind, at this point, there are over two point two million in circulation. Um, and you're talking about, you know, forty-four cases for prosecution that he could, that he could find. Um, most of those are with illegally obtained and unregistered firearm suppressors. Um, so this bill would have no impact on people who are breaking the law in that capacity. Um, it could only have an impact on people who are following the law, and of those forty-four, only a fraction of those people have done it.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I guess Phil Diaz wants to uh, share his thoughts also. Go ahead.
Uh, it's a, it's a basic uh, uh, topic, uh, like comparing apples and oranges. Okay, way back, the senator, the legislature uh, approved the drinking age to twenty-one because of the federal funds to help the uh, I believe the highways or something to do with that. And I just want to say that uh, the people of Guam voted to be kept at eighteen years old. I think you remember that, all you senators, uh, who lived in Guam all your life. But raising it to twenty-one was the, I forgot which legislature was the one that just did it with all the people's uh, vote on it and has there been any uh, improvements? Twenty-eighteen, the highest uh, what do you call that? Auto pedestrian death rate on Guam. And year after year, as a police officer, and even as a retiree, I still see the newspaper, traffic fatalities, traffic fatalities, traffic fatalities. And I just want to say, and how often do you hear of uh, uh, gun fatalities accidental, which was way in the beginning uh, until the Weber Law was created. And after the Weber Law, has there any been any uh, uh, unsecured firearm after that? No, because the people of Guam are pretty uh, uh, resilient. And, you know, when you pass a law, the Weber Law, then people started locking up their guns and because uh, on this night, even my dad, man, he he had his own long twenty-two rifle ready. Uh, I know where he put it. We all know where he put it, and he even showed us as teenagers growing up in case we need to use it to defend the family. So the Weber Law changed all that and we adopted to it. And yes, uh, unfortunately, Dedidu, Talafafa, where the kids were playing and there was fatality out of it. After the Weber Law, it's it's improved, but the uh, raising the drinking age, to me as a law enforcement, hasn't improved. We still have fatalities every year. So I just want to say, and for all those uh, who are against the the public out there and philosophers who disagree with the uh, the Hearing Protection Act, uh, you know, you got to look into it, you know, and and ask yourself, uh, what have we done for the safeguards of our streets of Guam? Because I can put up a lot of topics on how to safeguard the streets, but none of, everyone's going to be against me because I can say, go to Bali. There's no, there's nothing allowed over four-cylinder. So why do we have uh, V-eight Hemi engines? Why do we have uh, turbocharged engines? Why do we have uh, uh, even motorcycle, you're not allowed, I think, four hundred cc? Why do we have a uh, Hayabusa? Why do we have Har- that's a Suzuki, I think? Why do we have uh, Harleys of twelve hundred, fourteen hundred ccs, you know, on island? And but yet, we turn a blind eye on that. And yet, we still continue to have traffic fatalities. So for all those out there who are are so concerned about the silencers for their Hearing Protection Act, you got to think about it, man. Unlike what uh, I forgot the speaker off island and Mr. Gibbons mentioned, it's a, it's a very low rate. But uh, like I said, you can keep raising the drinking age. There's still going to be traffic fatalities continuous. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Zizouz Mossi, like, uh, Phil, uh, is there anybody else that wants wants to uh, share their thoughts before I bring it back to uh, the author of the bill? Anybody else? If none, uh, Senator Tony Arada, go ahead, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you again, sir, for having this uh, public hearing on Bill seventy-three thirty-six. I appreciate all my colleagues' input and for their presence here today, and also the those who have provided testimony on Bill seventy-three uh, thirty-six uh, to Mr. Williams. Thank you for your uh, expert uh, uh, testimony on on this bill. And, you know, hopefully, uh, we'll be able to get that white paper from you. If you'll be able to disseminate that to all fifteen senators, and that way they can have a better understanding of where that white paper came from and uh, the statistics that were used in it. Uh, to um, all those that also gave public uh, testimony, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I look forward to working with your committee, sir, as always, and uh, so we can move uh, Bill seventy-three thirty-six onto the session agenda, sir.
Thank you, Senator. This is a good bill. And in closing, I just want to uh, thank uh, everybody that participated in today's virtual public hearing on Bill number seventy-three thirty-six OR. And if you have any written testimony, you can email it to my office, Senator Pido at Senator J P Delai dot com, or hand deliver it to my office at MVP's, Senator Unit one oh two, triple seven, Route Four, San Jose, Guam. The time now is currently three thirty-eight PM. And the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Response, Military Veterans Affairs, Mayor's Council of Guam and Public Transit is now adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ali.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.